My lord, I was dealing with the factual points in the Lancashire case. There's two follow-on points I had. First, on the facts itself, and there's three small points here I can take, I think, very quickly. First of all, the fencing that my learned friend Mr. Edwards refers to was erected after the application was made in this case. Secondly, my learned friend refers to Roger Shaw, the head teacher's statement, and took you to the page, I don't suppose getting back there. That statement stated November 2015, that's after the inspector's decision.
Thirdly, Area A, of which there was, as the inspector recorded, very limited use
by the school for educational purposes, was not, and I understand still is not, a playground. It's just a grassed area, I understand it, just in case that. I don't know whether that was being said, but it was referred to as a playground.
What, you mean, not a constructed playground?
It's a grassed area, as I understand it, it was and always has been.
Children play there? Is that the point you're making?
No, very limited, very limited use.
Very well.
There is a constructed playground, but that's within the area of the school. There's also an area of astroturf within the school.
I see, okay. I mean, the agreed fact, say, the inspector concluded Area B, and to a lesser extent Area A, had been used by the school for outdoor education.
There was, there was that use, and the inspector also found, as I indicated just before lunch, that there was no compatibility between that use and village green use. The next follow-on point from that goes to the question, I think, was asked during the course of the hearing yesterday, about what's the effect of village green registration on an owner of land. I'm not going to labour this, I cover this in my case at paras thirteen to fourteen and footnote three, that's MS 2223. It's best summarised in my submission by what Lord Brown said in the Lewis and Redcar case, which you have at paras one hundred to one hundred and one, of that case we need to go to. Effectively, or in summary, a landowner is not deprived of the land, it's not a deprivation case, and there's been other cases considering the human rights elements, the landowner can continue to use that land. That's for a landowner's private purposes, but in my submission, that a landowner, a public authority landowner, can of course continue to use that land also for its statutory purposes, same point of light.
How does that work? I can see how that worked in the Redcar case, because it was golf, walking and so on, but with a school, how can that work?
Well, there'd be nothing, and this really ties back to the inspector's findings, there'd be nothing to prevent the school carrying on its educational use of the land, low-level educational use of the land, together with local inhabitants. And indeed, one of the cases that's discussed, I think, is Fitch and Fitch, was held, and that's discussed in the authorities, in Lewis and Redcar in particular, and in the Oxfordshire case, a landowner was said could grow a hay crop on his land. Now, local inhabitants then, while the hay crop is growing, could walk around it while it's cut, they could disport themselves more on the land. And the same in principle applies to the give and take that one would expect with the school.
I mean, they probably had less concern about safeguarding and things in those days. I mean, what would an educational authority have got to know, who's going to be using the land on which its children are playing, isn't it?
There presumably are some obstacles, impossible obstacles, in my submission, I mean, in terms of safeguarding, that was not an issue on the inspector's findings that had arisen in twenty years previously, it's not something that would prevent use of the school.
Was it a point that was made at the inquiry or not?
To a very, very limited degree, and that point's covered in Mrs. Beavington's statement, she...
But I mean, we've got the inspector's findings, presumably we are bound by effectively, as to the extent of the use and the degree of incompatibility.
It's that point, and they are the findings on which, in my submission, this court must must...
As a matter of law, is the landowner, following a registration, permitted to use the land only according to the uses that he, she, it has previously made of the land, or is it wider than that?
The case law, and Lord Brown in particular says that certainly a landowner can use the land in accordance with previous use. In my submission, it goes a little further, a landowner, the owner of land, can use that land for any private purposes that don't interfere with local inhabitants' use. It would seem absurd, in my submission, to say a landowner is somehow artificially restricted to previous use, so there'd be no reason why, for example, the school couldn't make some use of Areas C and D, despite a complete lack of previous educational use.
Okay, thank you.
So my lords, there, and I want to get into the law behind New Haven, and first of all, to reiterate the point, this is a principle of statutory construction, it doesn't have any express basis in the Commons Act 2006 itself. And my lords, I make some reference, so this is in my case, para fifty-eight and footnote twenty-eight, MS 2235, MS 2235, to some, to Benyon, I think Hallsbriest. It's common ground, this isn't a direct case of implied repeal in the terms considered in those texts, but in my submission, it works the other way round, and it's the same sort of point, so we're discussing here the disapplication of one statute in favour of another, in effect. And I quote there, the text that I think originally comes from the West Ham Church Wardens case, this is para fifty-eight, one, if repeal by implication should only happen where one provision is so inconsistent with or repugnant with the other, that the two are incapable of standing together.
That's implied repeal?
And in my submission, the same kind of principles apply when one's considering the limits of the principle in New Haven. The question isn't simply can there be, might there be, some incompatibilities, are these two so, and this is my learned friend Mr. Beale's submission, are these two so in direct conflict that they cannot stand together? And that inevitably flows because, as expressed in New Haven, this is a principle of statutory construction.
But the word statutory purposes in paragraph ninety-three is consistent with something, an activity which is contemplated, which may not yet have been started.
I fully accept that. It's the provisions, in particular the provisions, I'll, 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 my learned friend Mr. Beale's touched on those a bit, but I'll come to that. So, the way I put it in my case, it's, I don't think entirely different to how the Secretary of State puts it, is that properly understood, New Haven does, clearly has a narrow ratio, but that narrow ratio feeds properly into the principle, so it's a narrow principle also. And in summary terms, I submit, there must be a necessary and actual conflict like that, perhaps it's putting it too glibly, but I mean necessary as a matter of statutory construction. In other words, it's not enough that the land could be used for a statutory purpose, it's inconsistent with village green registration, there must be particular purposes, powers or duties, that must be defined, that cause the conflict or potential conflict. It's a future point. Then actual, and I say that's found in para ninety-three, but I'll come to that briefly, actual in the sense that there must actually be a conflict. One can imagine a statutory undertaker has an amount of land, some of that is, like New Haven, part of the operational port. It's possible to imagine in New Haven there was another beach that was owned by it, but wasn't part of the operational port. But in New Haven, that didn't, that wasn't an issue that the Court, that the Supreme Court needed to engage with, and it's clear from para ninety-six in New Haven. I suspect your lordships, ladyships will get there before I do. MS 657. The Supreme Court considered there was a factual element to the test. In other words, it might have been necessary to lead evidence to show the incompatibility, and that might have been necessary in a case such as the case that my Lady, Lady Arden refers to, where if the port was in disuse, or if the land was to one side, but where the land is inherently part of an operational port, and not only that, there's powers of dredging and other things, clearly there was no need for the Supreme Court to undertake that exercise, there was such a clear and direct nexus between those powers, and it wasn't disputed that the land was part of the operational, current operational working port.
Can I just put to you a very artificial example? Suppose that the local education authority only has one field appropriated to education, same general duties, is there an inconsistency then?
Not in my submission, I mean, that education authority clearly should have more land, but it comes...
Well, it hasn't in my example.
The problem, and where this is Mr. Beale's submission, goes to the powers that are relied upon. One could imagine a statutory undertaker that was an educational authority, had particular powers applying to that particular land, but education is quite a different type of function. The, an educational authority, and I will come to this, but I'll answer the question now as well, an educational authority in section fourteen of the Education Act is particularly relied upon, may not be able to meet all the needs in its area. If it can't meet all the needs in this area, there's case law, and I refer to the Barnet case and the Ali case, I do want to come to them, that authority would not be in breach of that duty.
So, the registration as a village green would disempower it from fulfilling its duty, but it wouldn't be an inconsistency?
It may mean that the education authority could only use that village green land for some low-level or more incidental educational purposes, recreational-type purposes, but it wouldn't mean that authority would be in breach of section fourteen or any of the other provisions. And that contrasts quite starkly in my submission with a port authority that has to use that port for that undertaking.
Well, that's not really the question, it's whether it's in breach, just as to whether it actually proposes to use this land for its statutory purposes.
This, this is the point that's covered at para one hundred and one in the New Haven decision. One hundred and one, it is, I'll touch on this now, if we, if I can first of all ask your, your lordship to turn back to para ninety-three, just briefly, para ninety-three. As was, as has been noted, I think, a couple of times, para ninety-three itself refers to statutory undertakers, but all parties accept that the principle is at least potentially capable of going beyond just statutory undertakers, and that's clear from the discussion that precedes para one hundred and one, one hundred and one's at MS 658. Because there, the discussion is plainly broader than just statutory undertakers. The conclusion at one hundred and one, various cases that are referred to, and they were relied, relied upon for trying to demonstrate the principle shouldn't apply at all, but said, those cases don't assist the respondents, the ownership of land by a public body such as a local authority, which has statutory powers, it can apply in future to develop land, is not of itself sufficient to create a statutory incompatibility. And I draw attention in my case to has statutory powers, what's contemplated there is an authority that has those powers already, could apply them, can apply them in future. Develop land's always a stark case with village greens, because, as I don't think it could be contested, village green status does limit the ability to develop, to develop land, starkly. So, there are two elements to the test, the nature of the statutory purposes and duties themselves, powers and duties, and that they actually bite on the land, there's a factual element to the test as well, and there must be that bite on the land for the principle to be engaged. The case my learned friend Mr. Beale referred to, British Transport Commission, is in my submission the source of the factual element that we see at para ninety-six. British Transport Commission, it may be worth very briefly referring to, that's in Authorities two, of MS ten thirty-two, so Authorities two, tab fifty-one, I should have said. And what I'll very briefly do is give your lordships, ladyships, the references to factual element, so for example, MS ten forty-nine, Vice-Captain Simmons says the test is a question of fact, it's not an underscore, it's not whether there's any conceivable circumstances in the future, it's a question of fact to be assessed at the time it is assessed.
We're on the page, aren't we?
Apology, I'm trying to go a little too fast. Ten forty-nine, last paragraph, four lines down, it's a question of fact, and then it's over the page ten fifty, where the argument that was pressed on the House of Lords, no conceivable circumstances, is rejected. There's a similar, and perhaps rather than, rather than going through each one of them, one finds similar discussion in Lord Morton, ten fifty-three, ten fifty-three to ten fifty-four, and perhaps it's worth noting, Lord Radcliffe, ten fifty-eight to ten fifty-nine, explaining what this test is, and bottom of ten fifty-eight, about five lines up, refers again to the Leake case, this is a pragmatic test, so to some extent it's being recognised by the House of Lords that they're taking a pragmatic approach.
So, I'm sorry, I'm lagging here, I haven't read this case as well as I should have. What's the test that they're talking about? Where is that spelt out?
It's likelihood, so one can see it, ten fifty-three, ten fifty-four, Lord Morton, I just skipped over this, I apologise, so it's top, about two-thirds down the page, that paragraph. David McShuson said, is there any likelihood that the existence of the alleged right-of-way would interfere with the adequate and efficient discharge of the undertakers' duties? That case, and that broadly reflects the other speeches as well, that case was the railway footbridge on railway land, that was considered by the House of Lords not to give rise to an incompatibility on the facts.
But again, that test is formulated in a way which could be construed narrowly or widely.
It's nonetheless a factual test, and it's one that, in my submission, one can see clearly, applied by the Supreme Court in New Haven at para ninety-six, it does, it's one that does apply. The, I might note that the quest, the case of Eyre Harbour, one of the Scottish cases, but it's also, also House of Lords, the case of Eyre Harbour was referred to in the British Transport Commission case as a case of obvious incompatibility. So again, no need to lead facts, a little bit like New Haven in my submission, where the incompatibility was so obvious from the, from the statutory context, there was no need to answer the factual question.
Now, are we, I mean, the, the test here, Lord Morton's test, is certainly arguably a rather more flexible test than the one you outlined before, but surely, in New Haven, my colleagues went through all these various cases and recognised that there were differences between Scotland and England, and so on, and that led them to formulate the test in paragraph ninety-three, and surely it's our job to apply that test, not to go on digging back into the various authorities that they reviewed.
It's more, I entirely accept that, we're looking at New Haven, and New Haven sort of sets the watermark, if that's the right analogy for this, but it's important, if one's considering the scope of the principle in New Haven, to understand a little the stat, the antecedent case law on which the principle in New Haven was founded. There are three points I cover in my case, why I, I say that New Haven should be, the principle in New Haven should be and properly is construed narrowly, first is the facts, my learned friends covered that. In terms of the various powers and duties, my lord, you can't ask which one is critical, in my submission, all of them are critical to the finding that there was no need to lead evidence here, because it was particularly the power to dredge, et cetera, one could see at ninety, para ninety-six, that was critical to that finding. Briefly then, second point is the antecedent case law, which I've touched on already, all of this case law refers to statutory undertakers of some sort or other, railway companies, harbour trustees, canal commissioners, et cetera. Those, the cases, Magistrates, vedemere, analysis trustees, all of those cases, again, involved powers where there was compulsory purchase as part of the package of powers, as indeed there was in New Haven, I don't think they needed to be exercised because it was so historic, but there were those powers. And that explains in my submission the wording one finds in para ninety-three in New Haven, referring to statutory undertakers with powers of compulsory purchase. So, it is important to understand this antecedent case law, and it does support in my submission the narrower interpretation of the principle, not a broader one. The third and final point I take, which I won't labour at all, is the lex specialis, so the, the, the principle of statutory construction, and I simply submit that that is an important part of the jurisprudential basis behind the principle in New Haven. I want then to move on to the education provisions relied upon. There is, clearly there's a great many provisions that relate to educational, to an education authority, to provide education at many different levels within their area, and there's a great many statutes. There's not a single regime, there's a collection of often disparate provisions, and I refer, in my case, to one, section six A of the Education and Inspections Act, which is in the bundle at MS eight sixty, volume two, tab thirty-five, I don't think your lordships, ladyships need to turn to it, but if a local authority needs a new school, it says, it must seek proposals for the establishment of an academy. But there's a whole mix of different ways in which education duties can be provided, and some will and some won't, involve land. The main provision on which my learned friend Mr. Edwards relies is section fourteen of the Education Act nineteen ninety-six, and that has been given some judicial consideration in two authorities I want to just briefly turn to, both of these are in volume four. I'll start with decision of the House of Lords in Barnet, so this is tab sixty...
What are these going to show us?
It's a discussion of section fourteen, and it shows the very general nature of the section fourteen duty. So, tab sixty-eight, the case starts on page one five oh two, MS one five oh two, and the case itself is actually about social services and the Children Act, so it's quite a limited passage I want to refer to, it's para fourteen, MS one five one three, in the speech of Lord Nichols. May be simplest just to ask you, ask the Court to read that, para fourteen.
All right, give me the MS again.
MS one five one three.
I'm going to read it after I have reminded myself of the words of section fourteen, which we get at?
Section fourteen is in volume two.
Yes.
About thirty-three.
Thirty-three, very well, thank you.
Fifty.
Yes.
Section fourteen is to secure sufficient schools for...
Where was it in Lord Nicholls' speech?
Para fourteen.
Do you?
It's a target duty.
The, I also rely upon the case that's referred to therein, that's the decision of Lord Justice Wolf and Miss Justice Pill in the Ali case, and that's in the same volume of authorities, tab seventy-five, MS one six nine eight. This case was about the predecessor, although identically worded to section fourteen, that was section eight of the nineteen forty-four Education Act, and it arose from the failure of the inner London Education Authority to make provision for pupils, there were, I think, a number of hundreds of pupils, children, who did not have schools to go to. So judicial review name brought on that basis, and is rejected. The key point is at MS one seven oh four. Yes, I think that's where Lord Nicholls drew the word.
Well, we've got that point.
But it's also at B, my lord, very broad and general terms, and note, perhaps in passing, that the Lord Justice Wolf refers to section one of the NHS Act, as a NHS Act as a similar type of provision, that's not my case, but...
Very well, yes.
And the, the point here, one I've already touched upon in answer to a question from Lady Black, is that if this land, if indeed the absurd example of all land, or the extreme example of all land, were to be registered as a village green that was held by a local authority for local education purposes, presumably excluding the operational school land that wouldn't be registered because, wouldn't have been used by local people in that way, it would not be a breach of the duty in section fourteen of the nineteen ninety-six Act, it would be a circumstance that the authority would have to deal with, but they have plenty of ways to try to meet that duty, it's essentially a resources issue for them. There might be local authorities that own no land, own no schools, but still meet their section fourteen duty, and that way round, in my submission, illustrates quite clearly the real difference between those provisions and the ones that were at issue in New Haven. My lords, I'm conscious of the time, that's all I had to say on the nature of the powers and duties in the Education Act. On actually compatibility, I've covered that, but in my submission, on the facts before the Court, that part of the test is not met here, and that was addressed by the inspector. But even if the Court were to conclude, potentially, section fourteen, et cetera, was a statutory duty or power or provision that might give rise to statutory incompatibility, the factual element doesn't work here.
Can I just check what rights were being sought to be secured by registration? Was it general rights to have general access to, to the land?
This is the discussion that arose in Lewis and Redcar, and then also in the TW Logistics case, which I know is on its way up, but Lewis and Redcar is probably the most useful discussion of this, the rights reflect the rights that were carried... The rights reflect the rights that were carried out, that were exercised in the twenty-year period. They may be able to be increased, there's an element of give and take. But it's not that the rights were radically different, or really in substance any different, to those which had been carried out by the same local inhabitants in the twenty-year period.
So if they bought their dogs sort of generally across the fields, they would acquire-
And if they had avoided the times when there were outdoor lessons on the fields, they would be expected to continue to do that, rather than to march into the middle of the class with their dog and say-
Sorry, I mean, I read what Lord Brown says, based on his experience as a golfer and walker over six decades. But if I can apply that to a land which is being used as a golf course and people walk over it, but as applied to land held for a school, how do you draw the line? I mean, is someone in, say, ten or twenty years' time when this land is still registered as a village green, have to go back to the evidence of what was going on twenty years ago to find out what they're entitled to do? I'm sure it's got to be a clearer test than that.
One would always have, where there's been registration, a record of the registration. In terms of use, I think it's only fair to accept that it will fluctuate. But it's going to fluctuate within the limited bounds of the inhabitants using that land. And similarly, in my submissions, I touched on earlier, there's no reason why the school couldn't, within the principle of give and take, make some more use of the land that would be compatible with the inhabitants' rights. It's not an intractable problem. Clearly, were this operational school land, it'd be a different thing, it probably wouldn't be-
This is my ignorance, but what does the register say? Does it specify the rights that are attached to the land as a village green? Or does it just say it's registered as a village green?
It says, it just identifies that the land and that it's registered as a village green and the date.
That's one of the points Lord Hoffman made in the Trapgrounds case, isn't it?
Still in the statute to registration of commoners' rights on village greens, but that's a different thing. My lords, is there any more questions on statutory incompatibility there in my submissions?
At the moment, not, Mr Westaway.
I can agree on statutory holding power.
Thank you.
This is, in my submission, simply a question of rationality. It was addressed, and in my submission, addressed properly by Miss Justice Ousley, and asked the court to consider what Miss Justice Ousley said and his reasoning. Clearly, the rationality of a decision is fact and context sensitive, and in principle, the decision-maker is in the best position to make factual findings. In principle, the High Court is in the best position to review the rationality of this. My submission, this court should give some weight to what Miss Justice Ousley concluded. I support my learned friend, Mr Bealey's submissions on this. There were two or three short points I wanted to make in addition. First of all, and maybe I can do this by reference to Mr Justice Ousley himself, in the High Court decision, para sixty-two and sixty-three, the end of sixty-two and sixty-three.
Two three oh six?
Yes, yes, I apologise, MS two three oh six. So one point my learned friend, Mr Bealey, has already touched upon, which is how the evidence came out and what Miss Justice Ousley reports about that. But in addition, at the end of sixty-two, you'll see, Miss Justice Ousley adds, not merely were no appropriation resolutions found despite search, but the history of the uses of land for educational purposes could not assist the inference. So the history of the uses of land, and then he goes on to refer to paras one hundred and nineteen to twenty, the very limited use for educational purposes. So it's incorrect, in my submission, to say everything pointed one way. The circumstances on the ground itself didn't point towards appropriation or acquisition for educational purposes.
I slightly question that, because I thought there was evidence that at least A and B were being used to some limited extent for educational purposes.
That's, to some limited extent, I draw attention to, but C and D not. And that leads me on to the second point, which I wanted to make on this, which is that A and B do fall to be distinguished from C and D in this regard. My learned friend's point, I mean, I say the inspector addressed it, she certainly referred to it, but my learned friend's point about the nineteen forty-eight conveyance relates to areas A and B, and of course E as well. C and D, even now, as I understand it, we're not being shown any resolution to purchase that land for educational purposes. And with C and D, perhaps just to finish off this point, appendix two, or appendix part two, I should say, does touch on this. This land was bought later, in nineteen sixty-one, by the appellant authority. And your lordship has that conveyance in page two three one of appendix part two. And there's a handwritten text on that conveyance at page two three one. The inspector fortunately tells us what it says, because I find it fairly illegible in the copy I have. But the inspector tells us that says, Education Lancaster Greaves County Secondary School. Education Lancaster Greaves County Secondary School.
Yes.
That's something the inspector notes, and notices, if she doesn't know the authority for that, and doesn't consider that to be sufficient to show that areas C and D are held. So a different analysis does apply to A and B and C and D.
And I'm sorry, in the decision, the inspector's decision, which paragraph ties up with that?
Yes, I've got one for-
Thank you.
So on that, I simply submit that Ousley's decision was right, that considering the facts and the context, the inspector was entitled to consider that Lancashire County Council had not shown its health for educational purposes. I'd say that applies more strongly to C and D than to A and B, but to all of the land.
Was there an idea that that secondary school would be cited there?
There, it never was, as the ins-
No, was there an idea that it would be at one stage?
One might say that that handwritten note suggests there was, but I'm not sure it goes much beyond that. It was cited elsewhere. Unless, I've slightly trespass on Dr Bowe's time, so unless your lordships have any other questions.
We don't have any questions. Thank you very much indeed, Mr Westaway. Dr Bowes.
My lords, my ladies, good afternoon. What I propose to do, in the time available to me, is to make five short overarching submissions, which cut across both points in the NHS appeal, both the statutory incompatibility point and the implied permission point upon which permission is sought. Then to deal shortly with the statutory incompatibility point as it applies to the NHS land. Then to spend time dealing with the implied permission point, and the points by my learned friend, Mr Lawrence. And then finally, if time permits, to make two short points on the future use issue.
Thank you.
If that's an acceptable roadmap, to make the submissions this afternoon. Grateful, my lord. If I can turn first then to the overarching submissions, and the first is these. There is a recognised public interest in preventing the disturbance of longstanding and peaceable recreational use of land. And secondly, allied to that, there is a particular public interest recognised in the village green legislation for the preservation of land which meets the definition of a village green. And I derive those two propositions, first from Sunningwell, a case you've been taken to a number of times in the primary authorities at twenty-three. And that's MS page six eight eight. And two references within the speech of Lord Hoffman within that case. Firstly, at three four nine, in the Law Report, MS page seven oh two electronically. Just above the letter D in the Law Report, Lord Hoffman introducing the issue explains that any legal system, any legal system, must have rules of prescription which prevent the disturbance of long-established de facto enjoyment.
Doctor Bowes, I'm so sorry, you're going a bit fast for me. Is the Trapgrounds case the same as the Sunningwell case?
No, they're both in Oxfordshire, where a lot of the-
I thought you said we were going to Sunningwell.
We are going to Sunningwell. Have I given my lords the wrong reference?
Isn't this Trapgrounds?
Twenty-three, Sunningwell. It is an Oxfordshire case, but it's a different Oxfordshire case.
MS seven oh two.
Seven oh two, I'm so sorry. Sounds of it's my fault.
But not at all, my lord, it's a litigious county as far as village greens are concerned.
Seven oh two, fine.
So seven oh two, Lord Hoffman explains, just below the letter D, any legal system must have rules of prescription which prevent the disturbance of long-established de facto enjoyments. And then his lordship goes on to explain from Roman law onwards to other civil law systems, before culminating at three five nine in the Law Report, MS page seven one two electronically, in the English position. And on MS page seven one two, my lords, my ladies, we'll see reference to the Blout and Layard point my learned friend, Mr Lawrence, drew your attention to this morning about churlishness. And then I would emphasise what's said in the paragraph that starts just above the letter D. On the other hand, this consideration, if carried too far, would destroy the principle of prescription. A balance must be struck. In passing the Rights of Way Act, that is, nineteen thirty-two, Parliament clearly thought the previous law gave too much weight to the interests of the landowner and too little to the preservation of rights away, which had for many years been in de facto use. As Lord Scott pointed out in Jones and Bates, there was a strong public interest in facilitating the preservation of footpaths for access to the countryside. And in defining Class C town and village greens by reference to similar criteria in the nineteen sixty-five Act, Parliament recognised a similar public interest in the preservation of open spaces which had for many years been used for recreational purposes.
Yes, not everyone would have accepted that at the time, but you're entitled to say it. Since then, we've had Parliament's endorsement of that general approach in the two thousand and six Act.
A point I was going to come to in just a moment, my lord, but just before leaving the case law and moving on to Trapgrounds, I won't take the court back to Trapgrounds, but in Trapgrounds, there was a human rights argument, as your lordships, your ladyships will see, about the village green scheme. And in tackling that human rights argument, both Lord Hoffman and Lord Scott re-emphasised the public interest that is struck within the balance between a landowner's interests and the public interest in preservation. And it's primary authorities fifteen is Trapgrounds, and it's Lord Hoffman at paragraph fifty-nine, and Lord Scott at eighty-six. Now, since then, since nineteen ninety-nine and Sunningwell, and since nineteen sixty-five, Parliament has had a further three opportunities to consider how the public interest in favour of the preservation of open spaces, to which I've just taken the court, should be balanced against the use of land for other important public interest activities. The building of hospitals, the building of schools, other things. It's done that in the Act of nineteen sixty-five itself, it had the opportunity. Again, in the Countryside and Rights of Way Act two thousand, again in the Commons Act two thousand and six itself. And then a further opportunity in the Growth and Infrastructure Act two thousand and thirteen. And of course, in none of those occasions did Parliament see fit to create a general exemption for public authorities. And fourth, my fourth point, is that in passing the last of those, the Growth and Infrastructure Act two thousand and thirteen, Parliament chose to curtail the public interest in favour of the preservation of open spaces and to give way to the protection of other publicly important uses of land. And it chose to do that by reference to the planning system. My learned friend, Mr Edwards, in his full and fair opening of this case for his client, took the court to section fifteen C of the Commons Act two thousand and six, which was inserted by the Growth and Infrastructure Act two thousand and thirteen. But what I'd like to take the court to is schedule at one A of the Commons Act as it now sits. And that's behind tab one of the Primary Authorities bundle, page fifty-eight. And your lordships, your ladyships will recall the structure of how the Act now works. Section fifteen C disapplies the right in section fifteen to apply to register land on the currents of a trigger event. Those trigger events, your lordships, your ladyships will see, in the first column of schedule one A, which is on MS page fifty-eight. And it disapplies it until a corresponding terminating event occurs. And I'd just like to draw attention to two. The first, an application for planning permission, an application, not the grant, an application for planning permission. And then at the top of page fifty-nine, a draft development, a draft of a development plan document which identifies the land for potential development is published for consultation in accordance with the regulations. Now, it's worth noting at that point in my respectful submission that the local planning authority, whose job it is to prepare development plan documents and to promote them for examination and then ultimately adopt them to cover the development of land in their area for a fifteen-year period, is under a mandatory statutory obligation to cooperate with a number of people in doing that. One of those people that the Secretary of State has defined must be cooperated with as to the content of development plan documents is the National Health Service Clinical Commissioning Group. And I take the court to that, if I may, in Authority Volume Two.
I mean, I'm sure that's right, but does that help us? I mean, clearly, under this scheme, provision is made very specifically, and you're entitled to say, well, the NHS interests are all to account. Where does that take us in relation to something which is based on use before this act came into force?
Well, two ways, my lord. Your lordship is quite right to say that this act doesn't bite on the application that's at issue because it was, the application was made a month before the act came into force. But at the time the decision was made, of course, this act was fully in force, and Parliament's intention as to how the public interest in favour of preserving open spaces-
Oh, for the future, yes, but it doesn't help us in relation to things which aren't covered by the act, does it?
It doesn't help for the application before that, but it certainly gives an insight, in my respectful submission, as to how Parliament sees the public interest-
Well, it clearly sees there's a problem which needs to be dealt with. And one way of dealing with it is to make sure that the health authorities and deeds are taken into account in producing the development plan. But I mean, that's what it tells us.
Yes, and I don't take the point any further. But fifth and finally, in those general overarching propositions, in legislating in the way they have, Parliament has done so, i.e. not to create a general exemption, has done so in the full knowledge of public authority land being registered as a village green, and of course, being approved by this court. And for particular relevance for my case, land held by the NHS has been approved as registered, as lawfully registered, by the High Court in two thousand and ten. And I take the court very briefly to this, because it's, of course, a first instance decision, in no way binding on this court at all. But I take it to derive this proposition, that Parliament must have known, or be taken to have known, that NHS land was found to be lawfully registered and had the express opportunity in two thousand and thirteen in legislating to derive a carve-out if it chose to.
Very odd if Parliament had said, well, we're going to change that retrospectively because we're concerned about- I mean, the first ever case I had with Mr Lawrence back in nineteen ninety-five was health authority land, as I recall. It's exactly, almost exactly the same facts as your case, yeah.
As I say, my lord, I don't rely on it to derive any great resistance to the appeal, but simply to draw out the proposition that at tab seventy-one on Authority Volume Two, just the note may be sufficient. But within the judgment of His Honour Judge Waxman at ninety-two, the submission was made that the NHS were outside the scope of the Act. And His Honour Judge Waxman dealt with that point at ninety-two and rejected it. Now, he may have been completely wrong about that.
I mean, that's clear from New Haven as well.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's volume two, I think it must be volume three. If it's seventy-one, I think-
Volume four.
It's volume four.
Volume four.
Fine.
Seventy-one.
Sorry, the MS page number, I'm so sorry.
Starts-
One five nine one.
One five nine one, I'm grateful. And the point about the NHS being covered by the Act is at one six two one. As I said, I do not derive any general support from that to advance my resistance of the appeal, but simply this, that Parliament was taken to have known that NHS land was within the scope of the Act as the law currently stood, and had the opportunity to exclude it if it wished to, and did not.
Yes.
And against those five general points, if I may, now turn to the statutory incompatibility point as it applies to the NHS. I respectfully adopt and gratefully endorse the submissions of Mr Bulley and Mr Westway, and I don't take up the court's time by repeating them. And what I propose to do is just take the court to those duties, which are in Authority Volume Two, tab thirty-seven. And as they stand, section two two three of the National Health Service Act is at page eight seven seven. And that is the power of the Secretary of State to form such a company for the purpose of providing facilities or services to persons or bodies exercising functions under the Act. So that is the purpose of the, of the appellant, it is a general purpose. And then they are providing a service, in this instance, to the Clinical Commissioning Group, and their powers are at page eight six six. Duties, I beg your pardon, their duties are at eight six six. Sub three, section three of the Act, subsection one, they must arrange for the provision of the following to such extent as it considers necessary to meet the reasonable requirements of the persons for whom it has responsibility. And then there's a list of things that one might expect a clinical commissioning group to do. And if I may make four short points about those two provisions which are in issue. The first point is that they are entirely general in character. They may, but not must, be discharged upon the application land. And of course, it's worth noting when considering that first point, that unlike the education authority, the NHS has no general holding power. So if it is this court's decision to allow the appeal, the NHS would be completely exempt from the scheme of the Act, because in every situation in which the NHS held land, they would be able to say that conflicts with the purpose for which we're holding it, because they have no general holding power, they have no equivalent of the education authority. And so I respectfully say that bears strongly upon the court's construction of the scope of the doctrine it outlined in New Haven, that if it truly has that wide implication, that in my respectful submission runs up against the narrow way in which Parliament has chosen to restrict the right to apply, and the four occasions it's had to create that general carve-out. The second point, my lords, my ladies, is that there's been no evidence at any stage in this very lengthy dispute between local inhabitants in Leatherhead and the National Health Service, that the performance of those duties would be in any way hindered by the registration of that land. Thirdly, the appellant does not challenge the factual finding made by the Court of Appeal that the registration of this land would not preclude the performance of the statutory duties on it. If I can take the court, this is an important point, if I may, to call Volume Two to the Court of Appeal's judgment, I'm sure the court's read this very carefully, and I won't dwell on it, but call Volume Two, MS page two nine eight four, paragraph forty-six within the judgment of Lord Justice Limblem. And about halfway down paragraph forty-six, he says this, "None of those general statutory functions were required to be performed on this land." And again, it is possible to go somewhat further than that. Although the registration of land as a village green would preclude it being developed by construction of a hospital or an extension of the existing hospital, or as a clinic, or administrative building, or as a car park, and even though the relevant legislation did not include a power or duty to provide facilities for recreation, there would be nothing inconsistent, either in principle or in practice, between the land being registered as a green and its being kept open and undeveloped and maintained as part of the Leatherhead Hospital site, whether or not with access to it by staff, patients, or visitors, this would not prevent or interfere with the performance of any of the relevant statutory functions." The appellant says that's strained in their written case, but they don't say it's wrong. And in my respectful submission, it's not wrong, but if actually on the facts that this land could be used consistent with the statutory purposes for which it is held. But fourth and finally, if I may say, on statutory incompatibility, the most telling of all, of all the points, is the way in which the NHS choose to characterise this land themselves within their written case. And if I may trouble the court to turn that up, call Volume One, page two nine two zero. Paragraph sixty-three, call Volume One, the NHS case, I should say, sorry.
I'm so sorry, I became adrift with the reference, can you give it again?
Call Volume One, the NHS case, MS page two nine two one, within the appellant's written case, paragraph sixty-three.
Yes, thank you.
And they say there, dealing with the future use issue in that respect, they say there, you sound as if it does not prevent or from being sold with vacant possession, so that the proceeds could be devoted to the acquisition of other land to be so used, it would be far from satisfactory to apply option three, in their case, the future use issue, without appropriate adaptation, in such a manner as to compel the health service to retain the land for future medical use, even if its judgment were in future to be that it would be better to dispose it for full value, freed from the TVG recreational rights, and to use the proceeds of sale to acquire other more suitable land elsewhere. That reveals, in my respectful submission, just how different a case this is to New Haven. There is no duty in this case to perform the statutory purposes on the land, but more than that, it's not even said by the health service that this piece of land is particularly important for the performance of those statutory purposes. What this case is, if I may characterise it in this way, is not a clash of duties, as there was in the New Haven case, this is a clash between the landowner's preference as to the manner in which they use and dispose of their land, and the duty which arises upon registration. Now, that balance has already been struck within the legislation. That balance between a private landowner, a landowner holding land on charitable trust, a landowner holding land subject to a private trust, or all sorts of other legal and personal preferences, how that is to be balanced against registration, well, that's already been dealt with in the legislation, it's been found to be human rights compliant, as amongst in other things. So this is a case where the circumstances are very different, and if a bright line needed to be drawn between this case and New Haven, this is a clash of preference and duty, not a clash of duty and duty. And if, my lords, my ladies, have no further questions on statutory incompatibility, then I will proceed with permission to deal with the implied permission point.
Yes, thank you.
And of course, not a point upon which there is permission, and not a point that was taken below. And it is unarguable, in my respectful submission, because it collides with two well-established principles. The first principle is that toleration of recreational use does not equate to permission. The second principle is that there is no exception from the scope of principle one for public authorities. And if I can develop those two submissions, toleration does not equate to permission, I derive from Mills and Silver, which the court will have at Primary Authorities, tab thirteen.
I mean, that's been approved by the House of Lords.
House of Lords in Sunningwell. If I can short-circuit it that way, then I will do so. I set it out in my written case, the fact that toleration doesn't equate to permission is approved at the highest level, and also in relation to village greens. And it's also worth noting, if I may respectfully say, that it's been affirmed by this court in relation to village greens held by public authorities, both in Barcas and in New Haven. What is, however, required in order for the landowner to render the use permissive is to be able to point at some stage in the twenty-year period, at some stage over two decades, they need to be able to point to a positive action from which permission may safely be inferred. And I derive that from Beresford, which is at tab seventeen, in the main authorities bundle, two places, both Lord Roger at fifty-seven, MS page...
Beresford being slightly overtaken by events.
Well, I was going to deal with that head-on, my lord, because it was very fairly said by Mr Lawrence that these two points survive Beresford, i.e. survive Barcas, i.e. the positive act point.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't want to...
No, 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 my lord is quite right to raise that, because of course, in Barcas, sorry if I may respectfully say so, this court overruled a portion of Beresford, and that portion is clearly set out by Lord Newberger at paragraph thirty-eight, and it is specifically the speech of Lord Scott between paragraph forty-three and fifty, because that speech is, A, inconsistent with principle, so it was said, and secondly, inconsistent with the other reasoned opinions. So I draw the, from that, that this court was not overruling Beresford on the point that a positive act needs to be shown in order to infer a permission. And if I can take it to the two surviving passages of Beresford, MS page four two three, within the speech of Lord Roger, paragraph fifty-seven, "In Roman law, precarium is the name given to a gratuitous grant of enjoyment of land or goods which is revocable at will. The arrangement is informal and is based on the grantor's goodwill, whether more or less enthusiastic, but, however informal, the arrangement does involve a positive act of granting the use of the property as opposed to mere acquiescence in its use." And secondly, Lord Walker, MS page four two nine, paragraph seventy-nine, "Acquiescence is, by contrast, denotes passive inactivity. The law sometimes treats acquiescence as equivalent in its effect to actual consent. In particular, acquiescence may lead to a person losing his right to complain of something just as if he's agreed to it beforehand. In this area of the law, it would be quite wrong, in my opinion, to treat a landowner's silent passive acquiescence in persons using his land as having the same effect as permission communicated, whether in writing spoken words or overt and unethical conduct to those persons. To do so, to do so would reward inactivity despite his failing to act, and indeed, simply by his failure to act, the landowner would change the quality of the use being made of his land from use as of right to use, which is, in the Latin sense, of the maxim precarious." So I derive that general principle, that one must be, have to point to a positive act. I say that survives Barcas, see Lord Newberger at paragraph thirty-eight, it is only the relevant sections of the speech of Lord Scott which are being overruled and departed from. And my learned friend, Mr Lawrence, didn't suggest otherwise. And of course, the Court of Appeal applied that approach in TW Logistics, but as it's on its way here, I won't say much more about that. Which brings me to my second point, which is that that rule, the positive act rule, does not apply differently to public authorities. And the cases before this court, where public, where this court has inferred an implied permission from the actions of a public authority, have all been rationalised by reference to that positive act. And if I can deal with that by taking up two cases, firstly, Barcas at sixteen, Authorities' Firstly, Lord Carnworth at paragraph sixty-four, MS, I'm so sorry, yes, MS page three nine Paragraph sixty-four, MS page three nine eight, my lord, Lord Carnworth explains, "The saying cannot necessarily be said of recreational use of land in public ownership, where land is owned by a public authority with power to dedicate it for public recreation, and it is laid out as such, there may be no reason to attribute subsequent public use to the assertion of a distinct village green right." And as my lord carries on at sixty-five, after the quotation, it follows that "In cases of possible ambiguity, the conduct must bring home to the owner, not merely with the rights being asserted, it's a village green right, where the owner is a public authority, no inference can sensibly drawn from its failure to warn off the users as trespassers if it had validly and visibly committed the land for public recreation." So in that case, my lord, Lord Carnworth, had two positive acts from which to draw a, an inference that the, that the subsequent use of the land was permissive. One was the decision to allocate it, appropriate it for a purpose which included public recreation under the Housing Acts, both incarnations of them. And secondly, was the decision actually to go on and lay it out for that purpose. So there was ample scope there. And secondly, Lord Newberger agrees with Lord Carnworth at MS page three eight eight. Paragraph twenty-four, "I agree with Lord Carnworth, that where the owner of the land is a local or other public authority which has lawfully allocated the land for public use, it is impossible to see how, at least in the absence of other unusual facts, it could be appropriate to infer that members of the public are using it, the land as of right." So there is a positive decision in that case, in that case, there were two positive decisions from which the court could safely infer the use was by right and not as of right.
That, that seems just to focus on what the public authority has done...
Yes.
...in terms of passing resolutions.
Yes.
The visibly. Or, or is the reference to visibly, you can look at the record of what they've done, that's good enough?
Well, well, secondly, if they had taken a positive decision to allocate the land for a purpose which included public recreation, then that would be enough. But in this case, there was then an additional step, which was they actually then went out and laid it out, and as my lord, Lord Carnworth, in a rather nice piece of judicial alliteration, says, "They validly and visibly committed it for that particular purpose."
Thank you for that.
Secondly, New Haven itself, tab twenty-one, paragraph twenty-four within New Haven, dealing with the bylaws in this case.
Yes.
Just wanted to drop the wrong reference. I beg your pardon, it's paragraph seventy-one, Lord Newberger, paragraph seventy-one, MS page six four nine, where there's a pithy summary of the two situations. In our judgment, the position in the present case indistinguishable from Barcas, in this case, as in Barcas, the legal position binding on both the landowner and users of land was that there was a public law right derived from statute for the public to go on to the land, to use it for recreational purposes, and therefore, in this case, as in Barcas, the recreational use of the land in question by inhabitants, the locality was by right, not as of right. The fact that the right arose from an act of the landowner, brackets in Barcas, acquiring the land and then electing to obtain ministerial consent to put it to recreational use, in this case, to make the bylaws which implicitly permit recreational use does not alter the fact the ultimate right is derived from statute. So again, in New Haven, in relation to the bylaws, it was the action, the positive action, of exercising the public law powers to make the bylaws which, when then objectively construed, granted a permission. I think my, my lord, Lord Wilson, or maybe my lady, Lady Black, dealt with a position this morning of put dogs on leads, and that gives the implied permission that they were able to walk dogs on the land. But in that case, again, it wasn't simply the fact that they were the landowner which was the question, the issue was a positive action from which it could be safely inferred that the permission was granted. And of course, in this case, the National Health Service expressly concedes that there is no evidence of a positive act to which it can point, and I say from which the court can then draw that inference. And I'll just give the court the reference in the written case, it's paragraph thirty-seven C in their written case, MS page two nine oh eight. There was, of course, in this case, a belated decision to communicate permission, to take a positive act, and that was the erection of permissive signage. And your lordships, ladyships can see the wording of that... And your lordships and legships can see the wording of that signage, call volume 2, MS page 3068, I don't take the court to it, it's fairly standard, permissive signage saying, you can go on here with our permission and we can revoke it at any time. But that was taken after the qualifying period had elapsed, and so I say, rather cuts against the argument that the court can infer some earlier positive decision. And if I may just say a word about Goodman, which is the High Court decision my learning friend made reference to this morning of Mr Justice Dove. And if I may say three short points about it. First of all, Mr Justice Dove endorsed the inspector's finding that there was a need for a formal, quotes, formal decision from which it could be inferred, the landowner had acquired the land for industrial purposes, had put it to some meantime use. And it might just be worth seeing how the inspector dealt with that very quickly. Goodman is in Authority, volume 4, tab 69. MS page 1547 it starts, and the inspector's decision, which was under challenge, is quoted at 1552. And at 1552, paragraph 88 of the inspector's decision is quoted, and he says this, this evidence seems to show some confusion within ECC about how the land was held in the early 90s. It is possible, under section 120 subsection 2 of the Local Government Act, I was pausing that, it's this provision my learning friend, Mr Lawrence, took the court to this morning, for land acquired for one purpose to be used temporarily for another purpose, but in this case, there is no evidence of a formal decision to use the 6.6 acres temporarily as open space until it was needed for industrial development. And Mr Justice Dove, at MS page 1569, at paragraph 42 on that page, says that was quite correct. And so in my respectful submission, Goodman is entirely consistent with the positive act step. There must be a positive decision from which it can be inferred the use was permissive. What you cannot have is complete silence for 20 years and then at the end of that saying, what I was really doing was granting a permission. Because, of course, if that was the law, then every landowner would be able to say at the end of a 20-year period, what I was really doing was granting permission through that period, and the law of prescription would disappear. The second point to draw from Goodman is paragraph 31.
Sorry, the MS page.
Sorry, I, um.
1565.
1565, I'm grateful, I'm so sorry. Halfway down, paragraph 31 on 1565, Mr Justice Dove says, I'm however unable to detect in these passages any support for the proposition appropriation pursuant to 122 from one power or purpose to another can be inferred from the authority's manner of dealing with or managing the land. And so management actions by themselves can't be enough for that purpose, and I would respectfully submit they can't be enough in order to evidence a formal decision.
But anyway, I think you told us that on your case, there is no power for the NHS Authority to appropriate the land to recreational use.
They have a power to allow the land on their common law basis to be used on an interim basis, I don't dispute that, but they have no general holding power, was the point I was making in opening, compare and contrast with a local authority who can acquire land for any of its functions and hold it in a sort of state of stasis before then appropriating it on to a specific function.
So is this right, that on your case, they have a power to hold the land against possible future use for NHS purposes, and in the interim, they have what, implied powers of allowing dedication for general uses as any landowner would have?
As any landowner would have, I accept that, my lord, I accept that's the position, but I do not accept that happened in this case.
No, no, I understand, I just wanted to.
And the evidential basis for that, if it were needed, is not only the concession made by the NHS in their written case, but also the inspector's finding as fact about what happened. Your lordships have that in Core Volume 2. Core Volume 2, page, MS page 3137, 3137, Core Volume 2. 3137, there's a series of paragraphs which are lettered, paragraph F, amongst the inspector's conclusions, no issues on as of right, there were no vitiating features in play which would preclude use as of right. And then he says, for instance, there was no evidence of any overt acts or acts on the part of the objector or its predecessor to demonstrate that before January 2013, relevant date, the landowner was granting an implied permission for local inhabitants to use the wood, no issue was taken on interruption on the face of it, time did not stop running during the qualifying period. And it's worth pointing out at this stage, if I may respectfully do so, that whilst the consequences of registration are a significant blight on the land, be they the land of a private landowner or a public authority, and of course I accept that, but all that's required to stop that effect is very, very limited. All a landowner needs to do at some point every two decades is to take some step from which it may be inferred that either the use is prohibited, so say, stop doing it, and therefore any use after that will not be as of right, or they say, you can do this, but it is a limited permission, and that permission I can revoke at any time. So the steps that are required to stop these consequences are very, very limited. And whilst I accept the consequences are serious, they can very, very easily be avoided by a responsible landowner, be they a public authority, or charity holding land, or a private trustee, or even a private landowner.
I can see how the second works, I'm not quite sure that the first would work, I'm not sure it matters, but, I mean,
My lord, just remind me.
The thought that the right to have registration of land as a TVG depends upon exercise of your rights of access as of right, that is to say, not when you actually have a right, but actually when you don't have a right, but you are asserting it.
Yes.
So one could put up notices as the landowner and say, you can't come on,
Yes.
but people might still come on and say, well, we've been doing this 30 years, we'll keep doing.
That would not be qualified. If a landowner put up a suitably worded notice, and the wording is a matter of great interest at public inquiries, but if they put up a suitably worded notice that said, do not do this, if people continued to do that in defiance of the notice, that use would not be qualified. And, my lord, that point about whether a landowner needs to go any further, it's not before you,
Yeah, yeah.
but was revisited by the Court of Appeal in a case called Winterburn and Bennett, which said that all that's required is to put up a notice, and that if people keep carrying on in defiance of the notice, well, then you don't need to do anything further. That notice, if it's suitably worded, is sufficient to render the subsequent use not as of right, and therefore not qualified.
What's that case?
Winterburn against Bennett.
It's a curious thing, that as long as you put up a notice
Exactly.
saying either do come on or don't come on,
Yes.
you're fine.
Yes.
But if you don't put up any notice, or if your notice gets knocked down, you forget to put it up again,
Yes.
then you may be stuffed. That seems for the law.
Well, my simple point is that they only need to do something very limited.
Yes.
And it's not, even if the notice is defied, in the sense of a prohibitory notice, it wouldn't be as of right because the use would be not neck v, it would be contentious in the legal sense of the word. So it wouldn't be actually by force, although maybe people might force their way onto the land, but it may be, it wouldn't be without force because it would be put in contention. And Winterburn and Bennett is the authority for that point.
Well, what was the date of that case?
I'm so sorry, my lord.
What was the date of that case?
2016.
I see, quite recent. It ought to have been established long before that.
Well, it had, but the point of issue in that case was whether, if a notice is put up and it's ignored, the point my lord, Lord Sells, is, does a landowner need to go any further? And there were some conflicting obiter views as to whether you need to do everything within your proportionate powers to go further, or whether a notice was enough, and the Court of Appeal says, no, in this country, we don't like to put matters into contention more than they need to be. If you put up a notice saying, don't do it, and it's clear and effective, and people defy that notice, then the subsequent use is not as of right. And that point was settled by that case. So unless I can insist any further on the implied permission point,
Please proceed.
I'll turn very shortly to deal with future use, and I deal with this by simply making two short points. What's being sought in this case is not what was contemplated, appeared to be contemplated by my lord, Lord Carnworth, which is a registration subject to a proviso, that when the Victorian statutes were engaged down the line, when the landowner wanted to put it to some use that would be incompatible with recreation, that the purposes for which it was held win out in that battle. That's not what's being sought here. What's being sought here by the NHS is a ability to sell the land freed from the constraints of village green designation to potentially a third party with no statutory holding powers or purposes whatsoever. And my first point is that, well, that's completely different to, with respect, what would appear to be contemplated by my lord, Lord Carnworth in New Haven. A different declaration, I assume, is what's being sought to what was being contemplated. But the second problem, if I can put it that way, with registering rights in that way, is this, is that property rights have a special quality about them in that they have to have a reasonable degree of stability. And for that, I rely on one of a number of Locust Classicus, National Provincial Bank in Ainsworth, which is in volume 3. Volume 3.
There are plenty of statements to that effect.
My lord, I'm so sorry.
Do we need authority for that, I mean, it's?
Yes. Well, if authority were required for that proposition, it's National Bank in Ainsworth, volume 3, tab 63, and it's Lord Wilberforce at 1247G. It's actually a family law case, dealing with whether occupation by a wife who was left by her husband amounts to a property right and therefore an overriding interest within the scheme of the act at the time. So the facts are very different, but in the context of dismissing that that was a property right, Lord Wilberforce articulates what has become a classic statement of the law on property, which is that rights of property must be stable, have some degree of stability. And if land were to be registered subject to that proviso, of course, the landowner would be able to terminate at will the rights which arise on registration, which attach to inhabitants of locality, and they would therefore not be at all stable, they would be entirely volatile and arbitrary. And for that additional principal reason, I respectfully submit that the future use declaration is not an avenue I would invite the court to go down. I hope I have kept within a suitable time for my learned friends to reply, and unless I have any further questions to field, those are my submissions.
You have kept within a suitable time, Dr Beards, thank you very much indeed.
Rightful, my lord.
So, Mr Lawrence.
Would you see, my lord, we could be trusted to stick to the time?
You could be.
Until when have we got, in reality?
Yes, indeed.
Have we got until Hoppus IV if we need it?
But you won't.
Well, if you launch your bets, I won't, and I can possibly do that. Let me begin, if I may, with something which I draw to your attention simply to help the court, and not necessarily to help either me or my opponents. If you look at Authorities, volume 1, the case of Lewis and Redcar, at tab 18, the lordship has been drawn several times, I think, to paragraph 100 on MS page 469. And Lord Brown says, a little line or two into paragraph 100, indeed, I may as well say at once that were it the law, that upon registration, the owner's continuing right to use his land as he has been doing becomes subordinated to the locals' rights to use the land, entirety of the land, for whatever lawful sports and pastimes they wish, however incompatibly with the owner continuing in his, I would hold that more is required to be established by the locals merely than use of the land for the stipulated period neck v, neck clam, neck precarious. If, however, as I would prefer to conclude, the effect of registration is rather to entrench the previously assumed rights of the locals, precluding the owner from thereafter diminishing or eliminating such rights, but not at the expense of his own continuing entitlement to use the land as he has been doing, then I would hold that no more is needed to justify registration than what by common consent is agreed to have been established by the locals in the present case. And so, my lord, two things emerge from that, the one directly from Lord Brown, which is that there's this principle of give and take, and where it applies, the landowner can continue to use his land in the way in which he has previously used it, and the local people in continuing to use the land as they have previously used the land must be respectful of the landowner's rights. And then there's a second proposition which doesn't emerge directly from this, but Mr Westerway correctly identified in my respectful submission, when he said, and what's more, a landowner can do more even than what he has previously been doing, as long as that does not have the effect of interfering with the rights that the locals have themselves acquired by using the land compatibly with the landowner during the 20-year period. So if the give and take has involved in reality very little give and take on either side, because not much has been done on the land by either party, and the landowner therefore finds that there's some extra things he would like to do, which are entirely consistent with what the local people are doing, then, as Mr Westerway correctly said, that's perfectly open to him to do. However, that doesn't deal, and now I'm just trying to help your lordship with what seems to me logically is the third situation that has to be considered. And the third situation that has to be considered is what happens if the landowner has done nothing with his land during the 20-year period at all? So what we have is a situation where the field has been, as it were, quite literally open to the local people, and the landowner has done nothing. And that's dealt with in paragraph 105. If you turn to page 471, 104, first of all, I repeat, the position arising on registration at a time when both the owner and the locals are using land in theoretically conflicting ways, but in fact harmoniously, simply didn't arise in the Oxfordshire case, and I, for my part, would decline to treat that case as if it has decided how such an issue should be resolved, paragraph 104, 471. And then this at 105. I would therefore hold that in this different situation, the owner remains entitled to continue his use of the land as before. If, of course, as in the Oxfordshire case itself, he has done nothing with his land, he cannot complain that upon registration, the locals gain full and unqualified recreational rights over it. But that is not the position I am considering here. Now, I draw that to your attention for this reason, that we are, in this litigation, by one means or another, that is to say, either by reference to my implied permission argument, which, as it were, comes beforehand and defeats the claim if it's right, or by reference to the argument based on statutory incompatibility, we are trying to say that in a case where the landowner has done nothing with his land during the 20-year period, and maybe for much longer, where there is an operative statutory incompatibility, what Lord Brown says here at 105 does not apply. That is to say, the land can have been used to no extent at all by the landowner, we are nevertheless in these appeals asking this house to hold that the doctrine of statutory incompatibility operates to prevent local people adopting what Lord Brown says there at 105 and saying, well, we've had the field to ourselves in the past, we must now continue to have the field to ourselves in the future. And I just thought it might assist your lordship to see the background against which these appeals are really brought by looking at those scenarios as exhibited in the Lewis case. It's a whole other question, incidentally, and I hope the House looks at that in due course in the TW Logistics case, whether this, what looks at the whole scope of joint uses and all the rest of it. But that's nothing that your lordship is troubled with on this occasion.
And can I just check, do others agree with Lord Brown's speech? Sorry, is it speech or judgment?
Yes, I think they do.
Judgment.
I do not dissent from what Lord Brown says.
No, not what you agree, it's whether the other members of the House agreed with.
Sorry, I missed the question.
The question is, do other members of the court agree with what Lord Brown says at one oh four and one oh five?
I'm not conscious that they disagreed with it.
I think the answer, they say they agree with it.
In principle, it doesn't merge from the way in which they dealt with the issue, that they were there saying that the consequence was, as Lord Brown sets out at one hundred and five.
Lord Hope says he agrees with everyone else.
Sorry, my lord?
Lord Hope says he agrees with everyone else, and I think Lord Kerr did too. Yes, Lord Kerr did as well, see, but he's got three of them.
All right.
It does have a slightly odd effect that you're in a stronger position where you haven't made any use of the land than the sort of education case where there's been some use made of it, and therefore suggested.
I'm saying that whether we've made use of the land or not, if the principle for which we are here contending, either of the principles for which we are contending, is accepted, then the claim will succeed, the appeal will succeed.
Yes, but if you've made some use of the land, then according to Lord Brown, you can continue that use, and that may mean that it's not completely incompatible with your statutory functions, even if it's very much reduced.
If that has happened during the twenty-year period, but it's happened in circumstances where, for example, we have found some use of our land that is consistent with our powers, that does not conflict with that of the local people, if when the land comes nevertheless to be needed for the full purposes of providing health facilities on it, such as to build a hospital or something of that sort, then, of course, if we are right on statutory incompatibility, we can pray that doctrine in aid, and nothing that has previously happened during the twenty-year period is going to be relevant to whether that doctrine applies or not. It doesn't prove the fact that we have found some use for our land that can sit compatibly with what the public were doing during the twenty-year period, that the primary purpose for which we hold the land, which is to provide medical services on it, is not a purpose which conflicts irretrievably and inevitably with the use for which the public is putting the land. I would say, as if it matters, that in our case, in reality, it's an all-or-nothing situation. Either we don't use the land for any purpose, as we have not been using it for many, many years, or there comes a point when we need to use it for the purposes for which we hold the land, whereupon there is immediately created an inevitable and unavoidable incompatibility between what we need to do on the land, or CCG needs to do on the land, and what the local people claim they are entitled to do on the land. So these references to the situation that has been considered by Lord Brown in the Oxfordshire case in the end simply sets a background for your lordships to consider before this issue of statutory incompatibility had arisen for consideration. Now it has. Once you've understood what he was saying in that context, I say it can be put on one side entirely and should be put on one side in order to consider what the resulting situation then is. My learned friend addressed you briefly on the subject of the relevant powers, and I think it would be right to say, and I don't really intend to apply to anything that he said about that, because he accepted that the, he accepted that the land, if it was to be used at all, was going to be used in a way, would be used in a way that was incompatible. But what he said was, there's no duty to perform the duty. And so it seems to me that the fact that we could, if so advised, at any time decide to dispose of our land as an ancillary power, which we must have as an adjunct to our power to hold the land in the first place, it doesn't follow from the fact that we would have a right in due course to dispose of the land, that if and when we decide that we're not going to dispose of the land, but instead put it to its statutory purpose and use it for its statutory purpose, it doesn't follow that at that stage it can be said that there's any way in which village green rights can survive alongside our exercise of our duty. And so I don't need to add more to what we've already said on that subject in our case.
But, Mr. Lawrence, can you say whether you agree with Dr. Beaux when he said that NHS bodies like yours have no general holding power? The power will always be limited for medical purposes.
Yes, that's right.
And so would it follow that if your appeal was to prevail, NHS land could never be taken?
Yes, it would, because we would be saying, our position is starker and clearer and easier in a sense to argue than that of my learned friend, Mr. Edwards, where the powers are much more general. We hold this land for a limited purpose.
Yes.
And we hold it so that we can provide healthcare services on it. And if we, once we decide to do that, if the land is full of the local people exercising their rights, then there's going to be a clash, there just is going to be a clash.
Thank you.
My lord, I think that's all I wanted to say in relation to the statutory incompatibility issue, but can I then just come back, if I may, to the implied permission issue?
Of course.
My learned friend, Dr. Beaux, has been really helpful, really, in accepting that there is an element of common ground between my learned friend and myself, between himself and me, which is that there is a power, an implied power, in the authority, in the NHS, in my client, to devote land to a meantime recreational use, following from the cases that I have referred to. Ben says, however, that when you look at Barkas, that case upheld everything that had been said in Beresford, effectively about the need for the landowner to do something in order to convey that the land was held with permission. And yes, it is true that where the doctrine that was established in Barkas is not itself in play, what Lord Newburger took the opportunity to do in Barkas is to say that the normal rule set out in Beresford, that in a, say, in a private law context to make it simple, where the land is privately owned, the landowner's got to do something to bring it to the attention of local people that they've got permission. So I'm not disputing that at all. What I'm doing is sidestepping it, and I'm saying that I am in a position comparable to the position that the landowner was in in Barkas, because the position is comparable in that what has to be done doesn't have to be done publicly in such a way as to bring to the intention of the public that their use is permissive. As my Lord, Lord Sale said a few moments ago, it's the, these are my words, but not yours, and I hope I don't misrepresent them, but there's a kind of internal decision-making process that has to be gone through by an authority like mine in order to indicate that what it is doing is exercising its implied power to put the land to recreational use. I have tried to argue that even that is not necessary, but assuming that I'm wrong about that, what I'm saying is that the circumstances here make it particularly easy for the court either to infer that there was such a decision, or to come to the conclusion that there was such a decision by reference to the presumption of regularity as properly applied to circumstances like ours. So I respectfully strongly disagree with my learned friend when he says that what the Barkas and New Haven cases have done is to rationalize the earlier law by reference to the need for a positive act, if by that he means that the relevant positive act has to come to the attention of the public. Where I concede that he may be right is by saying that what their lordship said in Barkas and in New Haven is that if something is to be done, if it's correct that something has to be done in order to, in order to exercise the power, whatever it is, either an express power or an implied power, then, 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 all right, there has to be such a decision. But it is ex-hypothecine, not the case, that the thing that has to be done in the Barkas, New Haven, NHS Lancashire context is something that comes to the attention of the public. What my learned friend did in order to try and make good the submission that he was making in that regard is to adopt some words of my Lord, Lord Carnworth in Barkas, which I'd just like to remind your lordship what it is that my lord said. He's starting at paragraph sixty-one, this is tab sixteen in the authorities bundle, page three-nine-seven, paragraph sixty-one. I just want to take it for the context. Lord Scott's analysis, he says, shows that the tripartite test cannot be applied in the abstract. It needs to be seen in the statutory and factual context of the particular case. It is not a distinct test, but rather a means to arrive at the appropriate inference to be drawn from the circumstances of the case as a whole. This includes consideration of what Lord Hope of Craighead has called the quality of user, that is whether the user for at least twenty years was of such amount and in such a manner as would reasonably be regarded as the assertion of a public right. Where there is room for ambiguity, says Lord Carnworth, the user by the inhabitants must, in my view, be such as to make clear not only that a public right is being asserted, but the nature of that right. With due respect to my Lord, Lord Carnworth, what that runs the risk of doing, and my lord was wrong to do it, if that's what he was intending to say, is of running together two things that are entirely distinct. First of all, was the use as of right? Even if it was, secondly, did the landowner by his actions convey, sorry, were the circumstances such that the landowner would not necessarily have come to the view that what was asserting, was what was being asserted, was a public right? In other words, even if the use is as of right, if a reasonable landowner would not have appreciated that a right was being asserted, then even though there's nothing in the statute about that, that's an overriding principle that is applicable in this whole area of the law, which enables the court to refuse to allow registration. It's an argument which I advanced in the Lewis case. It was accepted as an argument, as I read what their lordship said, but because they adopted the doctrine of coexistence, they were able, in the end, to put the argument on one side.
I haven't entirely followed that, Mr. Lawrence, it's my fault.
It's not your lordship's fault.
You seem to be saying, if it is as of right, there are circumstances in which it is not as of right, but you weren't saying that.
That was the argument, and you'll see, if you look at the Lewis, if you look at the Lewis decision and you see how Lord Hope is dealing there with the submission that I was putting forward to him, he was saying, he was saying at paragraph sixty-nine at MS four-six-two, after referring to what he agreed with Mr. George, my opponent, about, he said, he said at letter C to D, there is no support for the proposition that there is an additional requirement to the requirement of use as of right. But that doesn't answer Mr. Lawrence's point, which was really and quite properly directed to the first question, as to the quality of the user that is relied upon. That, I think, is the critical question in the case. And what he was there doing, in my respectful submission, was accepting that there was a separate question to the question of as of right, and namely the question whether the quality of use was such as to bring to the attention of a reasonable landowner that a right was being asserted. And Lord Carr, Lord Care, sorry, seems, in my respectful submission, agreed with that at one hundred and fourteen, page four-seven-three, when he said this, he said, it's for this reason in particular that I'm in emphatic agreement with Lord Hope in his view, that one must focus on the way in which the lands have been used by the inhabitants. Have they used them as if they had the right to use them? This question doesn't require any examination of whether they believed they had a right, that is irrelevant. The question is whether they acted in a way that was comparable to the exercise of an existing right. Posed in that way, one can understand why the Court of Appeal considered that the examination of the relevant question partook of an inquiry as to the outward appearance created by the use of the lands by the inhabitants. And then this, my lord, which is relevant to this point. On that basis, one can also recognize the force of my argument, that it was necessary to show not only that the lands had been used neck v neck clam neck precario, but also that it was reasonable to expect the landowner to resist the use of the land by the local inhabitants. Now, all of that is just background to the criticism that I respectfully want to make of what Lord Carnworth went on to say in Barkas at three-nine-seven.
I mean, obviously, happy to take any criticisms.
I'm sorry, my lord, I can't.
I'm happy to take any criticisms, if they're sound, but I'm not sure what they've got to do with this case.
Well, what it's got to do with this case is that what your lordship has done, if I'm right in saying incorrectly, is to introduce into the very concept of whether use is as of right, some concept to do with the need in this kind of context to have asserted.
That's got nothing to do with this case, it did in that case, because it was a question of whether it was being used as a village green right, as opposed to the enjoyment of some public open space, that was all I was talking about.
I do not derive anything from this. What I'm seeking is intellectual consistency in this area of the law, and in order to achieve it, I just need to say that my submission is that what this court is concerned with is not what your lordship said about the need to assert a particular kind of village green right or anything of that sort. What this court is concerned with on the argument on implied permission is whether I can say that the exercise of the implied right to put the land to meantime recreational use is such as to give rise to an implied license that does not have to be brought to the attention of local people. It's as simple as that. And then, my lord, I just want to say one other thing about what your lordship said that was quoted by my learned friend when he said, quoting you, that the, yes, he quoted you at paragraph sixty-five on page three-nine-eight, when your lordship said this, where land is owned by a public authority with power such as we have got here, you use the word dedicate, but you mean, I suspect, make it available for public recreation. That's not being used as a term of art, the word dedicate.
It just means what it says, dedicated for public recreation is laid out as such, which was an accurate description of the facts of that case. It's got nothing to do with this case.
I'm only quibbling because the word dedicate is the word you use when you're dedicating.
We understand that, I'm sorry if I misspoke, Mr. Lawrence.
And is laid out as such, there may be no reason to attribute, et cetera, et cetera. And then you say at sixty-five this, the point can also be tested by reference to the general proposition cited by Lord Newburger, that if a right is to be obtained by prescription, the persons claiming that right must by their conduct bring home to the landowner that a right is being asserted against him, so that the landowner has to choose between warning the trespassers off or eventually finding that they've established the asserted right. And then comes the bit that I want, again, want to take issue with, if I may, with the utmost respect, of course. It follows that, in cases of possible ambiguity, the conduct must bring home to the owner not merely that a right is being asserted, but that it is a village green right. Where the owner is a public authority, no adverse inference can sensibly be drawn from its failure to warn off the users as trespassers if it has validly and visibly committed the land for public recreation under powers that have nothing to do with the acquisition of village green rights. What I take issue with is the use of the phrase 'and visibly', because what that runs the risk of doing is saying that the decision in Barkas depended on something overt being done that brought to the attention of local people that the use was permissive. And it does not depend on anything overt being done that brought to the attention of local people that the use was permissive. If that was the case, then Barkas could have been decided on the simple.
What I'm saying there was that in that case, the authority had. All I'm saying there was that in that case, the authority had validly and visibly committed the land to use. I mean, I'm not saying what would have happened if it hadn't, but I mean, that's what I'm saying.
My lord, if your lordship is saying that needs to be done, then there's a risk of confusing the question of whether there's a normal Beresford-type overt activity which visibly brings to the attention of the public that their use is permissive. A confusion could be that of one, and that we are talking about, which is that nothing visible has to be done at all, as long as the power is validly exercised, that is all that is needed in order for the relevant implied permission to come into effect, which is what Lord Newburger, when he actually says what the Barcas case decided, I'm not going to take time to do it now, he says nothing about 'and visibly'.
But he specifically quotes what I've said there.
He doesn't, I don't think, quote with approval.
He quotes that very paragraph.
Sorry, where, my lord?
In whatever it's called, in New Haven. But I mean, it really doesn't matter, because that was dealing with the facts of that case, or entitled to submit that on the facts of this case, it doesn't matter that there's no valid or visible.
My lord, sorry, sir. Mr Lawrence, the anterior question, you talk about the exercise of the power, does it have to be communicated, you say no. What is the evidence of the exercise of any power here?
There isn't. What I say is you need to presume that the power was exercised.
I see.
Pursuant to the presumption of regularity, because unless you do, my clients acted outside their powers and in a way which would result in the land being registered as a village green, to the detriment of their ability to carry out their statutory duty. So the presumption of regularity is designed to support authorities acting and public bodies acting in accordance with what their duty is, and not to support them acting in a way that is inconsistent with what their duty is.
Yes, I see. Thank you.
That's all I need to say, my lord, thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much, Mr Lawrence. Mr Edwards.
Thank you, my lord, my ladies. I have essentially seven points that I can run through in order, if I may, and the first of those points arises from the submissions made by Mr Beale on behalf of the Secretary of State, which concerned and arose from the functions of a local education authority being set out in a general act and not effectively being fixed in land. My lord, that submission I would submit to the court simply fails to properly reflect the status of land that is held for education purposes by a local education authority, and I'll just make the following very short points. A local education authority is provided by statute with powers to acquire land for the purposes of the discharge of its functions. I took the court to those powers set out both in the Education Act of section five hundred and thirty and in the Local Government Act, section one hundred and twenty in my submissions yesterday. Many of the functions of a local education authority will require land. You can't build a school or extend a school other than on land, and a local education authority cannot provide place space for a school other than by the use of land. If a local education authority resolves to exercise those powers of acquisition, plainly it will have gone through a deliberative process which will involve a determination that the land that they are seeking to require is necessary for the discharge of those purposes, either immediately or in the future, and there is statutory powers. Mr Lawrence has taken the court to allow meanwhile uses following acquisition until the land is required. And that will particularly be the case when a local education authority uses powers of compulsory purchase, because in those circumstances, before those powers can be exercised, there would need to be demonstrated a compelling case in the public interest for those acquisitions. Then critically, once land has been acquired by a local education authority, it can only thereafter be used in the discharge of the functions of that authority as local education authority, therefore the duties and the associated powers as such. And that is where the fix comes. So once the land is acquired, then effectively the powers and the duties, or the duties and the powers, of a local education authority effectively become embedded or fixed onto that land. And of course, and as I explained yesterday, once land has been acquired for a specific statutory purpose, the local authority is not then entitled to use that land or deploy that land for any other statutory purpose unless it goes through a process of appropriation which involves a deliberative process by which it decides that the land is no longer required for those purposes.
In view of what you've said about the limitations on use following acquisition, should I ask you a question analogous to that which I asked Mr Lawrence? Would your prevailing here on this appeal mean that the local education authority would always escape registration?
So far as a local education authority is concerned, my lord, having acquired land for the discharge of its functions of the local education authority, then in the vast majority of cases, yes. The only reason why I add that provision, and I'm going to come back to this in the context of my Lord, Lord Wilson's comment on or question arising from paragraph ninety-six of New Haven in a moment. Is it is possible to envisage a case where a local education authority is now acquiring a parcel of land for a very, very specific and localised purpose, which may not necessarily be inconsistent with the acquisition of village green rights. And there must be the possibility of that arising, but bar that highly exceptional circumstance, then the position will be, as your lordship puts it to me, and I make no bones about it, it is likely to be the same for other particular functions of local authorities, including a function as a local housing authority in circumstances where they're proposing to acquire land to develop new homes, and things of that nature, where the local authority has functions that would involve either the development or the exclusive use of land.
Well, that's extremely helpful for us to realise the width of the decision that confronts us.
Absolutely, my lord, and just, again, I'm not going to go through the submissions I made yesterday, but plainly, there are other types of land-holding powers and circumstances of local authorities which would not give rise, at least in principle, to statutory incompatibility. And I raised yesterday that in the context of a local authority who is confronted with a village green application on its land, it has the burden to identify the purpose for which the land is held, and it has the burden to demonstrate incompatibility. And there are examples in the case law in New Haven, the New Windsor and Mellor case, the Oxford trapgrounds case, the Lewis and Redcar case, where local authorities, for various reasons, were not able to demonstrate that. And there will be other examples of local authorities exercising powers to acquire land. Again, examples I gave yesterday included section one hundred and twenty of the Local Government Act, where a local authority can acquire land for the benefit or improvement of its area. Now, that could cover a whole range of particular circumstances. In fact, if I might seek to illustrate that just very briefly with one example that I'm familiar with, which is a local authority who exercised that power to acquire a parcel of land on the edge of an urban area within the green belt, so in policy terms, a very limited scope for development, but it acquired the land in order to be able to control it and prevent antisocial behaviour taking place on that land. Now, that particular circumstance may well not be one as to give rise to incompatibility. So, my lord, and I make no bones about it, the scope of the submission, if successful, will encompass a certain amount of local authority land, the examples I gave, but by no means all.
Thank you. Is that number one?
Just to complete number one, very briefly, I've explained what, in my submission, are the consequences of a local authority acquiring land for education purposes are concerned, and how, once the land is acquired, there is a fix with the statutory powers and duties of a local education authority. In order to complete that submission, we would submit, and very much for the reasons I gave yesterday, that when properly analysed, the position with regard to a local education authority having acquired its land is not materially different from the circumstances confronting this court in New Haven. Plainly, in New Haven, there was a duty to operate a port, and there were powers associated with the discharge of that duty. That duty and those powers attached to the land that was held, is held at any point in time by New Haven Port and Properties, the organisation with those duties. And once the land was acquired, plainly, it becomes subject to those duties in just the same way as land acquired by an education authority does. And as I sought to indicate yesterday, in New Haven, it wasn't as if there was some red line drawn in a statute that indicated this is the land to which the duty applies, simply applies to any land that's acquired for the discharge of the duty. And in my submission, that, again, obviously, in terms of the result of New Haven, gave rise to statutory incompatibility, and I would submit that there is no point of principle, nor indeed material basis, for differentiation in terms of the core issue in those circumstances. My lord, that was point number one. Point number two, Mr Beale made some submissions about how the well-established principles which seek to limit, which operate to limit, the acquisition of public rights of way by implied or deemed dedication and private easements over land held for statutory purposes. And he focused those submissions on the BTC in Westmoreland case that he very fairly took you to. Can I just invite the court just to exercise a degree of caution so far as those submissions are concerned? The way in which the principle in operation in BTC in Westmoreland, how it operates, was described by the court in New Haven at paragraph seventy-eight of the judgment, and the parallel system of control in terms of private easements in paragraph seventy-nine, both on page six five one of the bundle. Now, in my submission, those sorts of principles which operate to control or restrict the acquisition of easements by implied or deemed, sorry, rights of way by implied or deemed dedication or easements through a prescriptive process, apply full squarely, or potentially apply full squarely, to land held by a local education authority. And if, in a particular case, there is an assertion of a public right of way that has come into existence through implied or presumed dedication through use over time, then it would certainly be open to the local authority landowner, the local education authority in this context, to contend that the coming into existence of that public right of way would be inconsistent with the statutory purposes for which it holds land. And the approach in BTC in Westmoreland, which is to introduce a reasonable foreseeability test, I would submit, is directly applicable to land held by a local education authority. And if and insofar as the Secretary of State's submission on this point is grounded on some principle, that in some way, in order for the BTC and Westmoreland approach to apply, there has to be some prohibition on either the alienation or the grant of rights over land held for statutory purposes, in my submission, that finds no expression, certainly exclusively in either case. The principle that underlies BTC and Westmoreland in other cases is that if land is held for a statutory purpose, would the grant of a right of way or the grant of an easement be inconsistent with the purposes for which the statutory authority is holding the land? And in my submission, that applies directly to land held for a local education authority. So, for example, if land is held as a playground or a playing field, example that was put to, I don't know if I remember, Mr Beale, by Lord Sales, and there was an application to modify the definitive map to register a public right of way over it, the local education authority would be entitled to say, well, that cannot be coming to existence because it would be inconsistent with the purposes, not only for which we hold, but actually for which we use that land. So in my submission, that is the point that we were saying. And Mr Lawrence reminds me that, for completeness, that section thirty-one eight of the Highways Act nineteen eighty, which is at page eight nine two in, I think, volume two, tab forty-two, makes that position clear, albeit that simply reflects what is a well-established common law.
Makes what position?
Makes the position that the approach, in terms of the extent to which a public right of way can come into existence by implied or deemed dedication over land that is held for a statutory purpose.
I see.
Existence.
Thank you.
Is established through subsection eight, albeit that simply brings into statutory form a principle that was well recognised before that as a matter of common law. Well, that was then point number three.
Two, I thought it was.
Sorry, point number two, I'm now moving to point three, forgive me. Point number three, which I hope I can take shortly, involves paragraph ninety-six in New Haven, and in particular, the point my Lord Wilson raised in respect of that. Could I just invite the court to turn to paragraph ninety-six in New Haven, again, and briefly, and it's in the volume, page six five seven. And this is the conclusion by the court, essentially, that it was not necessary to lead evidence to demonstrate incompatibility in the New Haven case. And in my submission, what that is recognising is that in certain cases, where there is an alleged statutory incompatibility, of which circumstances in New Haven was one, it would be obvious, and therefore there was no need to bring forward evidence to demonstrate that incompatibility. Effectively, it's like Ray Zipsalokata in different evidential contexts, because it would be obvious that the accrual of public rights over a beach would be inconsistent with the statutory duties for which the land is held. And we would submit that the same conclusion arises in the case of land held by a local education authority, in circumstances where, in the normal course of events, that land is either going to be used to build or extend a school, or for other forms of development, or for use as a school, playing field, or playground, or something of that nature.
Of course, they talk about plans for the future. You're not bringing in plans for the future as relevant to this inquiry, are you?
No, my lord, I'm not, but so far as part of the land is concerned, which is A and B, they are now in use for education purposes, not in the future, it's in the present. My lord, just so far as then the consequences of what is said in paragraph ninety-six, as I submitted, it seems to me the same point applies to local education authority land, i.e. you don't need to lead evidence because it's obvious that there would be an inconsistency. Now, it doesn't follow from that that in a different case and in a different factual context, there may not be a need to lead evidence to demonstrate an inconsistency. But I can imagine that there may be a case where a local authority is exercising the power to acquire land and holds land for that purpose, but that land could be used in a way that would be inconsistent with its registration as a green, or may not, and in those kind of cases, it may well be that there would be a need to call evidence. But that wasn't the position in New Haven, and we would submit that is not the case here. And so far as my Lord Wilson's point is concerned, well, there was a reference in paragraph ninety-six in New Haven to future plans, that is right, but the way in which the evidence was actually put forward by the port operators in New Haven was not saying we have crystallised plans to do X, which will involve certain activities on the land in question with which the statutory duties would be incompatible. Their evidence was, well, we may need it in the future. I don't take the court to it in the time available, but in the judgment of Mr Justice Ousley at first instance in New Haven, which is in the bundle at page five five five, and paragraph one two seven on that page, Mr Justice Ousley summarises the evidence of the operators, the New Haven Port and Property, as to what the basis of the incompatibility in evidence was. But as it turned out, certainly by the time it got to this court, there was not considered to be any need, so far as the court was concerned, to have regard or rely on that evidence, because the position was, they said, essentially obvious.
What we, I'm a little confused, what we make of area B, where the inspector accepts that there is some school use going on, but finds that it's not incompatible with the public's use. How do we find incompatibility there?
My lord, I was going to come to that as my next point, actually. In fact, I can come to that now, because I think I've made the submission I was going to make in point three.
Point four, point four.
Actually, my lord, sorry, forgive me for that. There is just one reference, could I just back on point three for a moment, in arising out of paragraph ninety-six? Lord Carnworth referred to the. Lord Calworth referred to the record or summary of the argument before the Supreme Court in the New Haven case, and in particular what Mr George was saying. And it's notable, perhaps, and indeed perhaps of some relevance, that what Mr George was submitting to this court on behalf of the port is that essentially the test was one of reasonable foreseeability. That is, is it reasonably foreseeable that the incompatibility would arise? So, effectively, he was taking the approach in BTC and Westmoreland and seeking to apply it. And again, I don't take the court to it, but that is clear from the record of arguments at page, let's check my note, I think it's one five 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 in the bundle. But in the end, as was made clear from paragraph ninety-six, the court didn't feel the need to either adopt or apply that conclusion in the case. But as I said, I can certainly see that in another case, of which neither this one or the NHS one is an example, there may need to be some evidential exercise carried out to demonstrate incompatibility. So, can I then turn on, as I foreshadowed a moment, to go to the inspector's conclusions? And these submissions in reply arise from what Mr Westaway submitted to the court, I think, before the morning break. Can I take the court to the call volume in the Lancashire case and turn within it to part of the inspector's decision, which is that set out at page two three three five? On page two three three five, there is a paragraph one oh three, which is something of a conclusion to what precedes it, where the inspector concludes this, there is little evidence before me of use of area A by the school during the relevant period. However, it is clear that some use was made of area B during the relevant period. Sports pictures were marked out, and I heard evidence of various sporting activities, including sports day, lunchtime football clubs, and the taking of various outdoor lessons. However, the use of area B clearly increased after the end of the relevant period. And then she goes on to say it's difficult to reconcile the evidence of some members of staff with the evidence of the headmaster and the condition of the field. So, as Lord Calworth mentioned, there is plainly evidence during the qualifying period of some, I think it was referred to by Mr Westaway, as low-level use of area B, that was it. Plainly, since then, both area A and area B have become utilised in association with the primary school and fenced. And just before I address Lord Calworth's point, insofar as the issue about what rights accrue upon registration, as Mr Lawrence has quite properly indicated, relying on Lord Brown in Lewis and Redcar, the rights that accrue would be the rights to allow the local residents to continue to use the land to the same extent without interruption by the landowner, as was the pattern of use during the qualifying period. So, essentially, there would be a right upon registration to use areas A, C and D in total, and there would be a right to use area B, but not exclusively, but consistently with some low-level school use taking place. Now, so far as the question about compatibility is concerned, I'll come to the inspector's conclusion in a moment on that. But could I just invite the court to turn forward in the call volume, please, to the section beginning on page two three three three?
Two three three three.
Two three three three, so it's just a page or so in front.
That's backwards, isn't it?
Yeah, backwards, yes. I'm not going to either read or invite the court to read certain paragraphs of this, but could I just invite the court just to note paragraphs eighty-seven to ninety and paragraph ninety-two on the facing page, which record the evidence of certain members of staff of the school who gave evidence before the inspector, which gives their experiences as to how the use by local residents of area B sat with the use of the school. Now, plainly, and as you would expect, if local residents came on to area B when the school was there and a member of staff asked them either to move or to confine themselves to a certain part of the land, the tenor of the evidence was that very many people would do that, but it was not exclusive by any means at all. And there are incidents set out in those paragraphs where certain local residents who were on the land at the time of school use refused to move off the land. So, it wasn't all sort of happy coexistence. Now then, so far as the inspector's conclusions are concerned, could I invite the court to turn on in the decision letter to what is MS page two three four zero? And on page two three four zero, paragraph one hundred and twenty-four, the inspector sets out what essentially is a conclusion to the section of her report, of her decision letter dealing with statutory incompatibility. And albeit, as Mr Westaway entirely properly and understandably refers to the court, well, there was a finding, well, you know, everything was rubbing along reasonably well, that was again in the context firstly of the inspector, of course, not reaching a conclusion the land was held for education purposes, and then also reaching a conclusion that, as a matter of law, the statutory incompatibility approach set out in New Haven didn't apply. And in my submission, the inspector's conclusion should be seen in that context. But in any event, and perhaps more broadly and from a point of principle, when an inspector is, or decision maker is examining statutory incompatibility in the context of an educational use, plainly, the decision maker is entitled to look at the use made of the land by the school, if any, as a matter of fact, during the qualifying period, and to look at how local residents' use of the land sat with that. But the question has to be looked at more broadly, is that even if there is, as in this case, a low level of recreation use of one small part of an overall parcel of land, in my submission, the correct approach is for the decision maker to look more broadly and identify whether there is a actual or potential broader incompatibility arising from the prospect of that education use changing or increasing. And the fact that there may be a finding of a low level of use, which broadly didn't give rise to difficulties during the qualifying period in this case, doesn't in itself mean that actual incompatibility sufficient to engage positively so far as the landowner is concerned, the New Haven principle wouldn't apply. You can perhaps test it in this way, that following the end of the qualifying period that the inspector was concentrating on in her decision letter, areas A and B have been fenced to prevent public access. Plainly, if the land is registered, then as I indicated yesterday, there is, you know, understandably, and not be critical, a caucus of local residents who want to see that fencing go. Quite frankly, they're in a powerful position to do that because the fencing of land that is a green amounts to an enclosure which not only interferes with rights but is potentially contrary to the criminal law. And that perhaps does give an indication as to how, in considering statutory incompatibility, the matter has to be looked at rather more broadly than necessarily the position that arose during the qualifying period.
Can I just check? Are you saying that the wrong test in effect has been applied by the inspector in paragraph one hundred and twenty-two, if the test is the BTC test, which is applied by analogy in the current context?
In one hundred and twenty-four.
One hundred and twenty-two I was looking at.
I'm by myself of that.
Because the inspector seems to talk about demonstrating the necessity of keeping the lands available.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, my lord, that in the context of land held for a local education authority, it is very much akin with the New Haven principle, i.e. matters speak for themselves, and that if you are looking for a piece of land that is held for education purposes, then if there is any incompatibility that is likely to arise, that will arise from the use of the land for those purposes, that gives rise to statutory incompatibility that will prevent registration. But the preface to that is that because of the inspector's conclusions on the holding power, and that as a matter of principle, incompatibility does not apply to land held by a local education authority, the inspector's conclusions should be, such as they are, should be treated with a degree of caution because she didn't actually even get to that conclusion in any event. That was my fourth point. The other points I can take much more shortly, if I may. A question arose during the course of Mr Westaway's missions about the nineteen sixty-one conveyance, and that was the conveyance of areas C and D to the Lancashire County Councilers, we say, local education authority. I don't ask the court to turn it up again, but it's in the appendix, part two, at page two three one. And on the...
This is the factual issue, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just a very, very small point of clarification on the factual issue. And there was a point about the manuscript endorsement on the frontis page of the email that says, I think it's education.
Secondary school.
Yeah, exactly. And Mr Westaway pointed to where that's dealt with by the inspector, who simply records the endorsement. I think, my lord, Lord Wilson posed the question, well, is that reflective of the fact there was some intention to relocate a school or build a school? That is dealt with in the agreed statement of facts for this case at paragraph ten.
Well, we needn't turn it up, we'll read it.
Where it is...
There was an idea to build a secondary school.
It's agreed as a matter of fact that there was an existing secondary school in Lancaster called Greaves County Secondary School, and there had been an intention to relocate that school to the land.
Thank you.
Point number six, very shortly. My lord, Lord Calworth asked about the equivalent, if any, of section ten of the Commons Registration Act nineteen sixty-five in the two thousand and six Commons Act. The answer from the researchers done by my juniors of lunch is that there is no equivalent, surprisingly. And the consequence, I think, is even more slightly bizarre in the sense that so far as non-pilot areas are concerned, so that's everywhere other than the handful of authorities like Lancashire, they still operate the register under the nineteen sixty-five act. So, section ten still applies to non-pilot areas, but so far as pilot areas are concerned, who operate or maintain a register under the two thousand and six act, there is no equivalent to section ten.
We didn't find out from Mr Beale why we were still operating on pilot areas after, maybe not, I'd quite like to...
He has an answer to that, I'm quite happy to...
Well, I have instructions on it, which is a long-term intention to put it down.
I understand, but it may be better to do a short note on this.
I think it would be helpful to have a note, it's not going to affect the assistance in the case.
We've looked into it, but we haven't...
I think it would be a factor of all, because it is slightly odd that we've got two regimes operating in parallel.
Thank you, Mr Beale.
Thank you, that's right.
That's fine. Seven days? Perfect.
Okay, and lastly, my lords and ladies, there is one final point, which is seven, and that involves just a short note that we've prepared overnight, and I think the clerk to the court has a copy of that, which I can ask to be distributed now. And it arises while it's being distributed, it arises from a slightly unsatisfactory way in which a point arose during my submissions yesterday, which concerned the powers to appropriate land, which is already a town or village green, and Lord Lord Sales had some questions that he put to me about that. What we've done, and during the course of those submissions, I referred to various provisions, including section two two nine of the Town and Country Planning Act, and section nineteen of the Acquisition of Land Act, that were not in the bundles. So, what we've done is to pull together those various provisions in a comprehensive form that explain the position.
I see, so it's not, it's not all that controversial. Your learned friends have copies of this.
Yes, it was provided this morning by email. None has any objection to it being provided to you. Nothing controversial arises from it, and it's simply provided in a way that is just provided comprehensively.
But don't we need, I mean, you didn't, I think, mention section sixteen of the Commons Act two thousand and six, which does provide deregistration subject to exchange land?
Yes, my lord, it's essentially a parallel position. Section sixteen, as my lord observes, applies to any landowner, not just local authorities, and applies to deregister, but with a requirement for replacement land, equivalent of exchange land, for an area proposed to be exchanged of less than two hundred square metres, I think it is.
And does that apply generally or only to the pilot areas?
It applies generally, it's in force across the board.
So, that would be a way in which you, any landowner can get rid of the village green, but only by providing exchange land?
Precisely, my lord, yes. And this note doesn't deal with section sixteen because this is specific to local authorities, which then have an additional route of appropriation, but in substance, it involves the same requirement for exchange land. Those are my submissions.
Thank you, Mr Edwards. The case was beautifully prepared by the solicitors, the written cases were admirable, the oral advocacy has been first class, and these are big points which we will now consider and take time to resolve.